Ian.
I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Alderman Mike Went, Six Word Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker at the committee of the whole and council meetings of October 6, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker, Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you very much. This evening, we're beginning the meeting with a presentation. I have invited Scott Mullin from the TaxSlayer Center to kind of give us an update of what's happening there. I know it's been interesting to the community of how they've been navigating all this. I was lucky enough to have a tour and things look great over there. And so, Scott, can you hear us okay? We could see you, but now we can't.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure it out. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hang on. Um, hang on. I hit a button before, but it's not good. Now I can't find it.
Do you see at the, I think it's at the bottom of your screen, there'll be a hash over.
There it is. Okay.
There you go. Now we can see you. Yep, we're good. Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Sure, my pleasure. Yeah, so we've been, we've been pretty busy over here. I mean, with a limited staff, you know, we had, we've laid off a dozen full-time employees and we've got about 550 part-timers out of work with no events going on. But the people that are here are chipping in, doing everything it takes to keep the building going, or it's mowing grass, painting, mowing weeds. I've been busier than ever with stuff I'm doing with our association for public assembly facilities. It's the International Association of Venue Managers where I'm the director of arenas. And so I've been on constant town halls, COVID remediation and planning calls. Just trying to find out what everybody in the industry is doing and constantly keeping up with everything. We have regular calls with the CDC, the WHO, NFL, NBA, MLB representatives talking about, you know, best practices, what's working, what's not working. So it's been busy. And on top of that, we're doing all these construction projects right now. We're taking advantage of the downtime to do things we normally couldn't get done during a busy season. So we're using our time wisely and taking some of the money, some of the money we've had in reserves and spending it so that when we come back and reopen, it's, the building is going to look brand new. It's going to have a lot of new bells and whistles. We're going to have a safe environment for our guests to come back to. They're, you know, I know a lot of people will be apprehensive about coming into a public gathering like this in such a big space. But we're doing all kinds of things to, to attack that and make sure people feel comfortable when they do come back. And so I can give you some examples of what we're doing. I had some pictures on a PowerPoint thing. I don't know if you guys can run those or if I share my screen, what's easiest? Probably easier if you guys did it since I've never done this before.
Geez, I think, I think David is going to bring it up for us here. You don't want, yeah, so we've got it.
There we go. Okay, so go ahead and click to the next one. So one of the things we're doing is putting automatic, trying to be touchless wherever possible. So all the sinks, the toilets, the urinals and all the restroom facilities are all going to be auto, automatic sensing valves. So we're doing that retrofit. And go to the next one. You know, Kone, a great thing with UV lighting, it sterilizes the handrail. So you don't have to have some employee standing there spraying chemicals for hours and wiping down the handrails. There'll be enough of that going on in, on the regular handrails throughout the arena. But it's an attachment that goes on and it sterilizes like 99% of the bacteria and viruses that could be accumulating on there. I think after 60 seconds, it's like 95%, and it's like 99% after 120 seconds. So it constantly sterilizes it. We're also, you can click to the next one. We're also doing the same thing in the elevators. Something they just came, they just showed us. This not only has UV lights, it also has HEPA filters built in. And it, it blows clean, clean air, sanitized air into the cab of the elevator. And so, you know, one of the places where people come into an elevator, it's probably the worst place you want to be with a bunch of strangers. We would, you know, obviously when we open, we will be requiring masks. But this would give an extra layer of protection for people in the elevators where, you know, that there's going to be fresh air when they get in the elevator. So we'll be looking, we'll be, go ahead and move, move forward with that. We're going to the next one. We're putting Wi-Fi throughout the arena. I'm not sure if you've been here before during a concert and everybody's on their phones at once. You know, it's depending on your cell service. We do have a Verizon tower. We have a T-Mobile tower in, or DAS systems in the building. But other carriers don't work as well. But to make it reliable and so we can use some of the touchless technology that's out there, contactless. We put in Wi-Fi throughout the entire arena. We had it on the concourse before, but mostly just for our point-of-sale systems and security cameras. Now it's for, the entire building is covered in Wi-Fi. So that's a big project that we're, we're doing during our downtime. And then you can go to the next one. The big, the big thing that, that we can take advantage of because of this is the mobile, a mobile ordering platform. Where you go, on your mobile device, you can go on and select the food items that you want to buy. You don't have to, you know, if you've been here for like a Lou Brian concert, you're, you might be waiting in line. The lines are across the concourse. We don't want people gathering and we want separation. So this gives people, they can sit there during an event, pick the items that they want. And then you can go to the next slide. It goes to, you can go up to the stand and it takes your credit card. You go on your phone, you load up account like you would any other thing you would do on your phone that you're buying. It stores your credit card info. So you don't have to swipe when you come up. You just go up and it'll, it'll scan your QR code. First you'll get a notification when your order's ready. It'll buzz your phone and then you just go up and you pick up your order and you don't have to wait. So then the next slide, we'll show that as well. So there's a QR code you get and then, so we have to like modify our stands to have more areas for pickup points. And it's going to be an education process to get people to use this. But I think once people get in the flow of doing it, it's going to make it so much better that you don't have to go stand in line and you won't, you won't miss the event while you're waiting in line. You can just go right up and it'll tell you when it's ready. All right, next one. We're also completely renovating the conference center. New car, new carpet, new walls, LED lighting system. That's going to be able to display different colored themes in the room. Putting a new sound system, new speakers. We've had problems with some of the original equipment. So now it's going to be a new state-of-the-art sound system. So, you know, one of the things, you know, problems with all the competition in the area, there's, there's conference centers popping up constantly. And this will, this will help us stay competitive. You know, it's going to be like a brand new room when you go in there. So that'll, that'll be terrific for our guests. And then the next one. We're also renovating the suites. So pretty much the same thing in the suites, forgotten the suites. New walls, new carpet, new furniture, all new seating out front. The new leather seats, there'll be bar stools. We're redoing the restrooms with new tile, new tile at the entrance. And new toilets, sinks in the, in the restrooms as well. So it's going to be much better for the folks that are paying for that experience. They're going to feel like they're walking into a new building, a new suite. So that's, that's good stuff. And next. Our ice chiller system for hockey and for Disney on Ice, the reason ice floor is, is reached as far past as life expectancy. So we've, we're in the process of putting the new chillers in. Those are the glycol or the R22 refrigerating tanks. And another reason we had to do it is because they're phasing out R22 refrigerant with a new type that's more environmentally friendly and is not, they're discontinuing the production of R22. So we would have had to do this anyway. So now's a good time to do it. So the, the, the new ones, they're taking the old ones out. The new ones will be coming in soon. And so when we do get back to hockey next year, I don't know if you've seen the announcement today, but hockey's not going to play this season. The SPHL just announced early this afternoon that five of the teams out of the 10 are not going to play. And, you know, our issue, the issue primarily they had here in Illinois is that we can't give them a date when we're going to open. And there's a lot of advanced planning that goes into a season and it's, it wouldn't be financially sound for them to jump off that cliff right now and try to play. So when we do come back next, next fall, you know, we'll, they'll have a new ice floor and a new ice making system. So it's more reliable. Next one. We're going to, some of the other things we're doing are, this would be a revenue generating opportunity. We'll put LEDs on the wall that you can see down overhead as you walk down the main staircase. We're going to put a nice big LED screen, same as like that's in the arena. And we can, we can run upcoming events on it. We can sell advertising on it. So that's a kind of a renovation that I really like because it generates revenue. We're also putting in walkthrough metal detectors instead of, right now, we've, up until now, we've been wandering and doing the pat downs. And this might help get people in quicker and it's, it's more accurate. And a lot of arenas have already gone to this since with all the, the problems that have happened around the world with, you know, terrorist act, type acts and things. So it'll make fans feel more secure coming into the building and making a nice, easy experience to come through the door. So we'll probably go to a clear bag policy as well when we reopen. And, you know, some new things that other, some other arenas have done. We just, we haven't got to it yet. But now, now we have the time to get these, these things done. This past year, we did some, we were getting a lot of feedback from our promoters that it was very sterile, like a, you know, like a prison in the back dressing room with concrete, cinder block walls with, you know, hard surface floors. And so we, we want to make sure we're competitive with new arenas popping up. And it's fiercely competitive to try to get shows. So we want to make sure that the acts that come here, light coming here. So we did a big renovation and put LED lighting in the dressing rooms and new, new restrooms. We've got, you can go to the next one. It's just another view. You can change the color of the lighting in the room. So instead of coming into, you know, industrial type setting, you're walking into a suite. So they really appreciate this. Go ahead to the next one. We also put in something, they always talk about, you know, things for the crew to do. They're here all day. Once they get the show rigged. And they want to make sure the crew is happy. And this also helps like some of our athletes that play here. We have, we made a game room in the hallway to get people something to do. And so there's a couple of pictures of, it's got a game where they can play. I think there's like 100 different type video games on the game on the bottom, the bottom, like old school type games. And we have shuffleboard. And in the end, we've got a big video wall with Xbox where they can do that or they can just watch TV. So that's a great perk for shows. And I've gotten a lot of really great feedback from the shows that have already experienced it. So I think that's, is that the last one maybe? Yeah. So that's the kind of stuff we've been working on. And, you know, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Does the council have any questions for Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Scott, and how you guys are holding down the fort and making it better when it comes back. Thank you.
All right, thank you for letting me share that.
You bet. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. On the next item on the agenda, are any questions on the agenda? Any changes or questions? Hearing none, we're going to move into the committee of the whole agenda items. We'll begin this evening. Item number one, declaration of surplus vehicles. I believe that Sarah is joining us for that presentation. Sarah?
Your honor, this is Kevin.
Hi.
I, just noting, I joined the meeting. I don't know if you caught that, but I was late joining, but I'm here. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Schoonmaker.
Thank you.
Is Sarah Mark on the call? Is there anybody on to present the surplus vehicles?
She was on. Looks like she just dropped off.
We might have lost Sarah. And let's come back to that item as she tries to get back on. We'll begin this evening with item number two, Historic Preservation Commission Demolition Review Code Amendments. Dirk Price will be presenting this this evening.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. So what you have before you is my effort to take last week's or two weeks ago's conversation with you and put that into codified form. We started with what the Historic Preservation Commission presented to us, had to make a couple of changes. And let me briefly discuss those. They wanted to make a couple of changes to the building code section. And to get this implemented in a timely fashion, the building code section, if you're actually going to make a substantive change by adding a section or doing something like that, there's a whole requirement to publish, give notice to the capital development board, have them available. And that would add 60 days to the process. So instead of that, I just made them cross-references, which is what their intent was. And I folded them into existing sections. So we had the cross-references that they wanted in the building codes as they wanted them, but they're not their own sections. That way we don't have to deal with the 60-day thing. I made other suggested changes. In particular, there's a specific point of reference for when the clocks start. So that we're not trying to guess about who got what when. We also set forth the details that about the chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission will make the effort to get the meeting together, to do all that. We related it to the, when it's received by the building official. I added one bit of discretion to the building officials discretion, which was for accessory buildings, which we seem to be talking about. Accessory buildings are not carriage houses, but they're short of that. Garages, sheds, things like that that might be over 50. And then I received a couple of comments from Alderman Went and we built those in. Those include putting some things in about the council having the ability to put it on an agenda and vote to release the hold if one is imposed. For example, and the, I think that's it, the exemptions, the others. So that's the draft that's before you now. I don't think any questions.
Are you looking for a motion this evening?
Move it forward, yeah.
Motion to approve. We have a motion by Alderman Berg. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item before we go to vote? Roll call, please. Oh, we got a question. Alderman Parker.
So, your honor, I would like to make amendment to this motion to have it sunset in, in six months. This, this process sunset in six months. And in that timeframe, the Historic Preservation Commission come up with their top 50 most significantly historic properties in Moline. And those are the ones that would be going under review. Everything else, and 50 is just an arbitrary number. I don't know if that's the right number. Everything else would not go through this, this hold process. So that's my motion. Kind of a long-winded one. I'm sorry, Janine.
We have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this amendment? Alderman Potter.
I'm curious what would happen for, in the future, when other buildings become older than 50 years old. I mean, that's the whole idea behind the historic preservation. You have, for instance, now there's a big thing with, you know, late modern structures or whatever that are barely 50 years old. And, you know, there's other buildings or whatever. You know, the whole idea is to preserve the, the, the architecture of the community, not just the stuff that's been here from, say, early 1900s, late 1800s.
Alderman Williams, did you have a response?
I, I think with this ordinance, we cast a rather wide net. You know, I think that the heavy lifting for the historic society is a finite number. You should be able to identify the historic properties within the city and always have the opportunity, if, you know, one pops up, to add it to the list or, you know. But there's no reason why we can't go through our housing stock and have an understanding of what we consider historic. Anything more than 50 years just shouldn't automatically, automatically qualify because it's old, I wouldn't think. That's, no, it's quite an impediment to anyone that wants to tear something down or build something new, I think.
Alderman Parker?
And in addition to that, I think one of the, I think it would help developers feel more comfortable about as they move forward that they're not going to, they know they're not going to get, or they, they don't, they're not going to be a process that's possibly going to stop them from doing whatever they want to do to make improvements. And I think one of the unintended benefits is we're going to all learn what these historic properties are. Because I'm, you know, if you were to tell me to list the top 50, I could list five or 10 maybe. And, you know, we're going to, we want to use the institutional knowledge of like the Barb Sandburgs of the world and the Curtis Rosmans that know all this stuff off, you know, off the top of their head. I, I think that they could easily come up with a list. And again, I don't know if 50 is the right number. We can always come back and amend that if, if that's too prohibitive. But I just think saying everything is just too wide open.
Alderman Potter?
Yeah, the, I, I think part of the problem in, in understanding the, the value of this is that, is that this is purely a hold. And, you know, as opposed to something that attains landmark status, which, which would require actually someone to submit an application to the Preservation Commission. This is purely a hold for, you know, two months. That's it. You know, and at the end of two months, the Preservation Commission or the council has no ability to, to prohibit the demolition of the structure. It's, you know, like I said, it's an educational tool. It's a tool to give developers or, you know, owners, you know, the ability to understand, you know, what tax credits might be available, what alternatives might be available, the ability to document it, the ability to salvage if that goes on. It, it, it doesn't have the, I, I think this is an unnecessary extra burden, if you will, to the process. And like I said, there are, in the future, there will be buildings that are built maybe 30 years ago, which at some point in time may have some historical or, you know, architectural benefit to the community and, you know, may fall under this. And this amendment that's given offers no ability to, to do, to take that into account.
Alderman Parker?
So I, I just don't understand why this, by limiting the number of properties that would be under this automatic hold, please help me understand how that would be more restrictive. It seems like it would be less restrictive. And I think it would invite more people to want to improve properties that, you know, quite honestly need it and may not have historic value. And they would, it's just one less step for developer. We've heard from developers before that they have so many steps to go through. If we can give them one less step to go through, and it's, it's not on every property. You know, it's the most significant properties. I still say, yeah, those do need to be looked at and held and, and had additional conversation about it. It's, I'd say, off the top of my head, I'd say 80, 85, 90% of all the structures in Moline are 50 years old. There's very, even the new stuff is probably coming up on 50 years old. So I, I just would, I, I think it would be important for us to try to make things less restrictive to people trying to improve property than to put in more barriers. I mean, that's, at least in my mind, that's not what my intent is, to put more barriers. It's to remove those, but still protect the important, significant properties in the city.
Let's do a roll call on that amendment, please. Alderman Moyer?
Nay.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Six ayes, two nays? The amendment passes. We'll now consider the amended motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on the amended motion? Roll call, please. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Seven ayes, one nay? That motion carries. Did we have Sarah able to join us again? Okay, great. Sarah, would you like to take over? You look very tiny on the screen, Sarah. Oh, that's not Sarah. Go ahead, Sarah. She may have a problem with her. Sarah, are you muted?
There she is.
Well, we'll come back to Sarah in just a moment. Let's go to the budgeting, accounting policies and procedures. Carol Barnes.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Back in September, we had a special work session to discuss the budgeting and accounting policies and procedures that are before you tonight. And the policy in front of you formalizes the discussion that we had back in September and assists in articulating the methods underlying the city's financial reporting. And I would like to say, as, as we've got the document in front of you, I do have a couple of things I just wanted to update the council on. And the first one is, is under item number three for eliminating the contra accounts. And in, to replace that, eliminating the contra accounts, I have added a couple of paragraphs. The first one being adding a contingency account for all operating and enterprise funds of the city and budgeting a reduction for half of the increase of a three-year average of the audited net change in fund balance. And I think this will be a good way to kind of identify the changes between years. In addition, it had been discussed about potentially trying to budget for vested benefits. And so we have added a vested benefit payout account number that we will be putting in for the budget every year for all operating and enterprise funds again. And we are going to budget annually the five-year average of vested vacation and sick leave payouts that have occurred typically over that fund. And I think that's going to be able to bring in a more reasonable budget for the council. Any questions on that?
I don't see any.
And then the last one is, I, the last one is, I just added a section for police and fire pension funds. And I am sorry that I neglected to put that in earlier. And it just simply is in accordance with the state statute. And with that, I want to thank the council for all the time that you've put in to review this policy and all the procedures. And I'd like you to know, it has already helped me greatly as we've tried to prepare here for the 2021 budget.
Thank you, Carol, for proposing them to us. I think they're good changes as well. Does anyone have any comments on that before we make a motion to accept these?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Moyer. Any further discussion?
Your honor?
Yes. Alderman Went.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank Carol and the rest of the team and the other aldermen. We're working through this. It's been a long time coming. I know we've been talking about it for, at least since I've been on council. But I really believe that this is a huge step forward on our budgeting process and having a clear understanding on what type of reserves we need. And it'll more accurately reflect what we need for revenues as it pertains to what we're going to have to tax and levy and, and those sorts of things. And make sure that we don't inadvertently levy too much or too little. But it'll really help guide us moving forward because I think we are a little bit in the wilderness up till now without it. So thank you very much, everyone.
Let's go to roll call. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no ayes? That passes. Thank you. Let's, let's, thank you very much, Carol. Let's go back to Sarah Mark. Sarah? So we're still unable to hear you, Sarah. Is there another office that maybe you could just call in from? Okay, we're going on to others. Dirk Price?
Good evening, again. I've got a couple of things in the others column. We'll start with procurement. As you know, we're working on bringing forward a new purchasing policy. Carol, Marty and I are working on that. But at present, we've had a couple of issues with invitations for bid and requests for proposal going out. Some of it has to do with some of the confusion around the project. Some of it's a matter of old habits die hard. We ended up with road specs and a roofing job. We've had some antiquated language about the prevailing wage act, which this administration now in Springfield has changed, and we haven't, haven't kept up with that. And some of the contract language that's been perpetuated has served us well in the past, but it needs to be done. And so part of what we're gonna be bringing forward will be a policy that, I, I need to see the contract before it goes out to bid. Because the bidding is pricing all of the risks and the risks that are shifted in the contract. And if the contract's not right, changing it afterwards costs us money, and we, we need to stop doing that. So I'm gonna be bringing forward as part of the purchasing policy that all of the RFPs have to come through legal. That's how I cut my teeth in municipal law. It'll be, we can turn it around. I don't think I'm gonna be the person slowing anything down. But tonight, what we need to do is some of this frustration, I would call it, in the invitation for bids and the RFPs has resulted in getting less than satisfactory results than we wanted for a couple of things that are urgent. One of them is the mobile office that the Kears funds are gonna pay for, that the police chief has been working on with Sarah. And so we wanna go to a negotiated proposals approach, where we, instead of, you know, this Rorschach that we're trying to get people to bid against, we reach out to the, the manufacturers we've identified who are likely candidates, work with them to bring back a negotiated proposal and tell you, you know, th- these are what we got back. This is the one we prefer, and this is why. We had to do that, for example, to get the washroom sanitized for the park, the park board, because people weren't sure what it existed, we were asking, and the numbers were all over the place. So when you sat down and negotiated, we got a, a number that's gonna be paid for by Kears funds that's defensible. They've signed off on it down at DCEO. But that took that kind of negotiated approach. So we wanna do that for the mobile office. And second, also, we're coming up on leaf pickup. And, you know, we know we're short. We don't have the seasonals. And so to try and make sure we have the labor needed there to supplement, we're gonna need to do negotiated proposals for that as well. And that will involve a sort of a time and material approach, require prailing wages, maybe. As part of the negotiation, that's what we're hoping for, and we'll report back next week on that one. But tonight, I just need to, to get the council to affirm using the request for negotiated proposals approach for the trailer and leaf pickup, because the invitation for bid thing didn't work as well as we'd hoped, and we're out of time.
You're looking for a motion?
Yes.
Just for that?
To move forward for negotiated proposals for the trailer and for leaf pickup.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Went?
So I, I hear you say that you're bringing back, or will be bringing back kind of a policy on, on how these are gonna be reviewed into the future. But that may be a couple of weeks before you, you get that together. Can we just, as part of this motion, amend it to say that until we have a, a policy in place that all bids, RFPs and those things will go across the corporate council's desk before going out?
I'm ready when you are, yeah.
So I, I'd like to make that a, a amendment to this motion that in the interim, until we have an adopted policy, that all of those go across the corporate council's desk before going out.
Second.
So we have an amendment by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Roll call on the amendment, please. I'm sorry, who was the second mayor? Alderman Parker. Thank you. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no ayes? That motion carries. So now we're considering the amended motion. Is there any discussion on the amended motion? Roll call, please. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no ayes? That motion carries.
My second other this evening involves the captain's table. Successfully opened, it's operating, it looks great, all those wonderful things. We're just trying to close out the contract. One of the open issues in the contract, there was money to be paid immediately by the captain's table folks to the city for overages. There's also to be negotiated, in one of the leases was promised $150,000 loan against equipment for which we have a security interest. We're working on getting that list together. But one last open issue was interest earned on the insurance proceeds after they were paid to the city. And the, the lease agreement under which the captain's table was restored doesn't mention the interest earned on the money in terms of who's going to get it, how it's going to be dealt with. And so the money was just put into the park fund, and that's where it sat. But in working out the final accounting with the captain's table folks, they've told us that Ray, in particular, along with Doug, promised them that they would get the interest and it would be applied against the cost, that they might otherwise be responsible that went over the $2 million. And again, it wasn't in the lease, although there wasn't anything in the lease, like in other situations we have, that expressly prohibited that from happening. And when we've gone back and looked at it, we, we looked at the authorities of the people involved and what the projected interest earned was gonna be. And it could have been within their authority. But then the captain's table folks reached out to our former council here and got a confirmation that in fact the promises were made by staff members, and council said that that's her recollection as well. And so in light of this, it's, it's not like other things we've got going, other disputes we've got going, where staff is promising things or not doing things. And those are the things that really was a matter of staff not doing things. Here, staff affirmatively promised something that was within their ordinance authority at the time. And that makes all the difference, that it was within their authority at the time. So I'm coming back to report to you that the interest earned on it will probably need to be, and my recommendation is that we recognize that and send that interest over to the captain's table against their bill that they owe the city. We've collected more than half of what they owe us. They're gonna have the $150,000 loan, and we're down to the last bit of immediate payments to us. There's no dispute on what their lease will be going forward. But this last interest issue, it's a $28,000 issue, will be applied against the cost of the construction. And unless there's heartburn, that's how we'll proceed.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it needs a motion.
A motion to affirm crediting the interest against the.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Parker?
Do we have any things in place now to keep this from happening again? On, you know, for staff, for lack of a better term, making promises that nobody else knows about, and that when those promises come due, they may not be around?
The, well, the ordinances are, are structured and, but like, like contracts themselves. I can write you a killer contract, but you might not get the right dance partner, unless you have the right dance partner. So I would say you got Marty and me watching it so that it's, we're not gonna be making those kinds of promises. Can we catch everyone? We're making promises and invitations forbid that aren't right. So the process is vigilance. That's all I can tell you. We're trying to, to install a, a means of double checking these things so that they don't happen.
Thank you.
Roll call. Oh, Alderman Schoonmaker?
Yeah, it, it's, is, is there like a, a template that you start with when you write a contract like that, or is it always? My, my question is, a lot of times you'll see in a contract that, you know, verbal, anything verbal is not acceptable. So if it's not in writing, it's not good. Can our contracts include similar type language, and that be required on all contracts? Just to clarify this? We've, we've had that same type of problem
Yeah.
quite a few times, actually, over the past few years.
And we, we do have that, that language. And the issue here is that the summation language, if this promise had been made before the second, the amended version of the lease had been signed, I wouldn't be here making this recommendation. But this promise was made after the second one was signed. So it's essentially, is it worthy, should it have been a rider, a written rider, an addendum, or a further amendment? Absolutely, it should have. That would be the proper legal practice. But the fact that it never made it to paper and got stapled to it, that might not be a sufficient defense for us, given the actual authority of the people involved, and now what they're saying their, their recollection and testimony would be, if asked. And so while we do have that language, again, the courts, it, it's the issue about the courts of equity and the, the courts of law. And this would be an equitable remedy, Alderman Schoonmaker, that I think that they would be able to achieve.
I also have less heartburn about this particular case, because it's our building. There's, there's a cooperative, ongoing, you know, thing going on here. It's not like, you know, some situations where, where we agree to something, we do it, and then they move on. This is, we're, we're in this together, so this isn't as big of a deal. I don't have any heartburn over it, in this case.
Are there any other comments or questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no ayes? That motion carries.
My final other for this evening involves the crime-free housing program, and then also the expansion of the crime-free housing program to the single-family homes. We have to move the, the timeline a little bit, and here's why. When Chief and I put this together and wrote the ordinance, we were both under the impression that the renewals of these multifamily rental properties was on a rolling basis in terms of how they came in and went back out. That's not the case. Much like, like the liquor licenses or the food and beverage licenses, they happen once a year. That's how finance handles it. And it's March. And so the idea that everybody was gonna pile into a training before March, that's just not gonna happen. So we are going to bring forward a tweet to the ordinance that says we're gonna move up the renewal to early March in 2021. That's when people get their renewals. This year, they went out a little later in June. We're trying to find a sweet spot for the clerk and finance, because we have several of these across the calendar where they're dealing with these renewals, and we don't want mistakes. So we're trying to find the sweet spot. Eventually, that renewal will move up to January for everybody. And this will give everybody all of 2021 to come into compliance on the multifamily. And then we need to move the single-family add to it that we've already talked about. We need to move that back so that single families added in 2022. So I'm gonna bring forward those changes to the timeline. We're moving those. We're also getting some COVID pushback, a little bit about attending, and we, we're, Chief and I are solving that, but that also is slowing the training process. So to get everybody trained, deal with the renewal for finance so that they, they can actually get that done. That's gonna happen, and I'll be bringing that forward unless there are questions.
Are you looking for a motion, or are you?
Not tonight. That's just an informational, so you, you're ready for it when it comes.
Are there any questions? Dirk, Alderman Went?
So with that, are we gonna change? Because I think the ordinance says that the renewal is annually based on when they apply, so we're gonna, we're gonna change that to reflect actually what we, we are currently doing. Is that the plan?
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Dirk. Is that it for you?
That's it.
Now, I know we can hear Sarah, because I can see Sarah. All right, we're gonna go to our item number one, declaration of surplus vehicles.
Sorry about that. We'll try again.
Thank you for accommodating it.
No problem.
It was a good fix.
Okay, so, good evening. Fleet staff is seeking authorization to declare 14 vehicles and one old salt spreader as surplus. We would like to reutilize some of the 2013 police interceptor utility vehicles that have already been declared. This will in no way increase the size of our fleet. It would simply be a one-for-one reduction. By reutilizing these interceptors, it would allow us to replace existing vehicles that exhaust, that have exhausted their useful, reliable lives. And we're already on the vehicle replacement schedule for 2021. Staff feels that we can have another five years of useful life out of these interceptors when used in a less intense non-police application. And it would reduce dollars spent on replacements for 2021, as well as help stabilize the capital expenditure spending. Fleet staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call, please. Can I clarify, Sarah? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Is it 19 total vehicles or 15?
It's 14 vehicles and one piece of equipment.
Okay, because I think that the item says it's declaring 19 city-owned vehicles as surplus. So I'll just need to adjust that.
Okay.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Thank you. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no ayes? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. The, let's see. Now we're gonna move into our informationals, and we have three that are kind of grouped together. Carol Barnes will be presenting all three of those, and she'll walk us through them. Carol?
Yes, Your Honor. And like you said, I'd like to combine especially those first two together as we review the August financial statements and the proposed budget amendments. And before I get started, I would like Marty to just give a very brief update on what's kind of happened over the last six months.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Carol, Mayor, City Council. I think what you're gonna hear tonight is some good news. Due to the proactive steps that the City Council took earlier this year, limiting hiring and freezing increases in promotions, cutting back on discretionary spending, allowing for a drawdown of excess revenues in some of the certain internal service funds, and approving later an, an early retirement package. I'm happy to report because of those actions and the diligence of many of the staff and employees, the results are looking very favorable. So chief among them is that we avoided any layoffs or furloughs. Second, we maintain an acceptable balance of services to residents and no increases in taxes and fees. And third, and most important, and I think you'll see as Carol does her presentation, is that it looks like for 2020, 2020, that we will likely be able to, looks like we have a balanced budget. So she's gonna tell you a little bit about that. Carol?
Thank you, Marty.
Yes, thank you, Marty. And just to reiterate, I would just like to say that all of the cuts that we have brought before you and that we've made together have gotten us to where we are today. All of the weekly updates and all of our discussions, you know, over the last six months, we're meeting. You're seeing me online all the time. So all that was very, very helpful in those discussions. And thankfully, things are not as bad as what we worried that they would be. As you know, as, as we got better information, especially on our revenue estimates, we changed things accordingly. Because originally, when we first went into COVID, IML, as well as the state, we had very conservative estimates. But as we got better information, we adjusted accordingly. And our revenues, we're still projecting them to be down moving into 2021. But we're in a much better financial position going into '21 with the cuts that we have, have made today. And I would just like to say before I go through the statements that it literally took all of us working together to get to where we are today. And like Marty said, I am going to be showing you a balanced budget for 2020. And six months ago, I never would have imagined we would be at this point. So I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to go through that with you. So with that, David, I do apologize, but I'm gonna change my slides ever so slightly. I'd like to start with the second slide. And the second slide is going to be our summary of the proposed amended budget. And I'm gonna go through this a little bit slow. Please ask questions along the way. But I think a lot of this, you've heard the story over and over again, but I do wanna kind of summarize it. First of all, if we take a look at the 2020 budget as we originally adopted it, it's the blue column that is highlighted. We had adopted a budget that had revenues of $170,000. We had adopted a budget that had revenues of $117,000, expenditures of, or $117 million, with expenditures of $125 million for a drawdown of about $8 million. That was a thought process that went through that. We chose to do that, and that was because of the captain's table, just like Dirk was talking about tonight. That drawdown was for $2.6 million of funds we had on hand. We chose to draw the liability fund down, as well as WPC. As we move into the budgeted column, that I'm going to go into in a little more detail, it's that very next column, you will see that amended column, instead of being at $8 million of drawdown, we're at about 7.9. So we're virtually right, pretty much where we were at. Lots of hundreds, hundreds of changes have taken place to get us to that point. But before I go through it, I want to show the net difference. And the amended budget does include all of our bond refinancing. And as you recall, we did have escrow accounts, escrow dollars, that were placed in those funds, because some of them are not actually going to refinance until next year, so we're going to be holding those dollars. So we need to net out the refinancing. Then if we look at our net amended budget, and we compare that to the original, you'll see that our total revenues are down about $6.9 million. This is citywide across all funds, or about 6.3% overall. On the expenditure side, we were able to offset those shortfalls in revenues by reductions in expenditures, all except for about $500,000. And that's largely due to drawdowns in the fleet and facility that we talked early on. We thought it was going to be a larger amount than that, but there are some drawdowns with fleet and facility, and they do stay in line with the policy that we just adopted tonight. So we have reductions in revenue offset virtually by the same amounts in expenditures. And now if we go to the summary over to the left, I just summarized these in broad totals. The first category on revenues that our reductions include, the sales tax, utility tax, food and liquor tax, income tax, all those taxes that we have talked about over the last seven months on that big spreadsheet that we had that were our top 18 revenues. That lift is reduced by about $3.2 million. And we anticipate that those are, those types of shortages are going to carry in to the 2021 budget. In fact, that's what you will see in the proposed budget that we're going to bring forward to you in a couple of weeks. The next category for reduced revenue, following the licenses and permits, we haven't talked about this as often as we did the taxes, but our building permits are down, plumbing, electrical, and liquor, and they're down about $610,000. And part of it was, council did give property tax relief to some of our, like, for the liquor licenses, and so that is a little part of what that reduction is as well. Interest income is down, just about shy of $600,000. As you all know, rates are very, very low. In fact, we are happy if we can get 0.25% in some of our overnight funds right now. We did have an uptick in our intergovernmental revenue for the rebuild Illinois that we've talked about. We've got money budgeted for some reimbursement from cures, as well as we've got our CDBG grant. And all those together is over $1 million. Then we've got charges for services that saw a decline. All of our utility fees, we had originally thought they were going to be down about 7%. Most of the utilities are only off about 2, 2% to 4%, which is a good thing. But we did have reductions in all of our parks, charges for services at the pool, the Green Valley. We also had, and it's in the amended budget, we spoke about it during the accounting and procedure policies, that we were going to start eliminating chargebacks. So part of the reduction is eliminating on the revenue side, that was a double-up for chargebacks, as well as some things that we did in the vehicle and facility funds. So that's $3 million in that category. Then in addition, fines and forfeitures are down about $270,000. Part of that is because the council did remove fines and penalties on our utility bills in regards to the COVID. So in total, our total revenues are down about $6.9 million. So how did we accommodate those types of losses in revenues? And the first one, because of your action as well, we have 35 vacant frozen positions that were not filled during the year from people leaving employment with the city. Those 35 vacant frozen positions are just shy of $2 million. In addition, the council offered a voluntary early retirement program, and we had eight participants in that. So against the $2 million of savings on the frozen, we did have to pay out about $450,000 in payout. But we will reap the benefits in 2021. As you know, we had hoped that the participation in that program might have been a little bit higher, but we're happy for the ones that were able to take advantage of it, and that it worked out for them to do so. The list of additional reductions in expenditures that follow here are overtime. We had some reductions, Department head citywide, they tried to watch the overtime dollars over the last six months. Reductions in supplies, office supplies, minor equipment. All of our seasonal employment was reduced for about $660,000. We had professional services and payments to agencies for $670,000. We did defer vehicle purchases this year, as you know. All of the purchase, all of the purchase, vehicle purchases were pushed back, and they are worked into the five-year plan that Sarah's going to be presenting now during the budget over the next five years. We'll be back on track with vehicles. We had some reductions in contract repairs. We implemented a credit card elimination program, and for this partial year, that's going to save us about $50,000. We've had a reduction in supplies, reading materials at the library, all the concession purchases down at Green Valley. And we reduced our salt purchases, because we had some additional salt in storage that we felt we could get by on. We also had some various equipment and traffic equipment that was deferred. We will need to get that, but we were just waiting until we absolutely had to buy it. And so we've had some savings on that as well. So again, the total reductions were offset by expenditures, and we're very pleased that we're able to bring this budget into balance. I would like to note that on the frozen positions, the 35 frozen positions in the early retirement, as we head into 2021, that has set the course, because those were partial year in the 2020 budget. That was only partial year as people would retire throughout the year. For 2021, that will accumulate to over $3.6 million of savings going into 2021. And so again, the foresight of freezing those positions is very helpful now, as we kind of look at an opportunity to streamline and possibly bring in some efficiencies into the operation. Some of the cuts that we have shown you, they're not sustainable. So you will be hearing as we bring forward the 2021 budget, we'll be bringing some of these things back in for your consideration. And so to kind of end that and summarize it up, our revenues, we continue to think that they're going to remain flat for 2021, pretty much at the level that we are at right now. And we are certainly not out of the woods yet. There's no question about it. The pandemic continues, and it could very well last into, you know, the first half of the year or beyond. One of the things that we've talked about that you'll see in the budget is that we're considering staggering the hiring back of any positions that we do propose for 2021, just so that we're watching the revenues, making sure that they're holding stable before we commit to some long-term expenditures. And as we proceed forward, we're going to continue to still, to continue to look at ways to contain costs and to become more efficient. And so with that, I'd like to, if you can go to the next summary page, David?
Could we ask?
Go ahead.
Is it possible to ask some questions, or do you want to wait till the end?
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, absolutely.
Go ahead, Alderman Went.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Carol. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this completely. So our revenues are down about $8 million without the, kind of, the bonus money, or whatever, that we got with rebuild Illinois and cures, right?
That's true. If you take, that is correct. Yes.
But don't we have, and maybe that's included in these offsets and expenditures, but don't we have a number of things that we did that weren't originally budgeted, that we're spending on with, like, the cures money, that we wouldn't have otherwise spent that money on? Where is that reflected in here?
Yes, and that's kind of thrown into that other category in the bottom. It's kind of an up and down on the expenditure side that was actually an increase. Because we have incurred, I think the total right now we're looking at is just shy of $400,000, that we are hoping will be reimbursable through cures. So that's kind of netted out in the other expenditures, but that is an increase in the budget.
So other than that $400,000, then we really, in the other, we saved outside of that $525,000 in other stuff, but then it was offset by the increased spending? Is that?
Yes, that would be, yes, that's correct. That would be correct, to look at it that way.
Okay.
In addition, if you take a look at this net total budget, I didn't break out specifically, but like I said, there are accounting changes that would bring that total net reduction in revenue. It wouldn't make it as deep, and that is for some of those double-ups on those chargebacks, and the way we did some of the internal service funds. Those two items right there equals, it's just shy of $2 million. So if we look at that 6.8, minus the $2 million, that brings us down to 4.8, but then we bring it back up for the million that you just talked about, and so we're like 5.8. It's in that range, 4.8 to 5 million.
All right, thank you.
Does that make sense? Any other questions?
I have one, Your Honor.
Alderman Waldron?
Carol, I think, I note to here that you guys saved about $186,000 on overtime. When we get our weekly report, I see a significant amount of overtime for police and fire. Is that factored in here, or are police and fire pretty much on budget for their overtime?
They're pretty much on target for their overtime. They are a little lower than where they normally would be if you annualize the year-to-date amount.
Okay, thanks.
But they have needed to continue operations to stay the course.
Alderman Berg?
Um, we've got one more question. Carol, I'm sorry, and I may not, so on the expenditure reductions, that eight early retirements, is, should that be, is that supposed to be a negative 447, or is that a 447, or no?
That's a very good question. The list here was showing reductions in expenditures, and when we did the early retirements, we had to pay out vacation and sick time, as well as the benefit offer that we gave them. The 50% of their, the 50% benefit level, so it is an addition. That was actually an addition to the expenditures.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Yes.
I think, oh, we've got one from Alderman Went.
Oh, sorry, one last one. You had alluded to the vacant frozen positions being 3.8 million, or whatever, next year. I'm assuming that the intent is that not every single one of those 35 will remain open for all of 2021. I mean, I can think of a couple that, you know, we're going to wind up needing to backfill sooner or later, or is the idea that we'll backfill some of the very important positions, but you're still going to have some people who, in middle management, or whatever, that wind up dropping out, and you won't hire them? So it'll equal out to be that? Or is, because I hope the intent is that you're, you know, that we're never going to hire an economic development director, or a water plant manager, or something like that, that those, that there's some of those things that are going to be hired?
Yes, you're exactly right, Mike. The point that I was making is, now that those positions are already gone, it kind of paves the way, it opens the door, that we've got $3.6 million to kind of mix and match as we bring people back on for council's consideration. So it gives us, it gives us a lot of flexibility as we move into '21. Any other questions on the first page?
I think we're ready, Carol.
Moving on to.
Go ahead, Carol.
Okay, moving on to the second page then. This is just a snapshot of the general fund. We were just talking about citywide, all the funds together. Now, this is just the general fund. And for the general fund, the proposed budget amendment, you will see, highlighted over there, the right-hand corner, revenues in the general fund are down about 10%. And we know that, because it's heavily reliant, that's the taxes and all those types of reductions that we've been so concentrated on over the last six months. But as you take a look at the difference in revenues and expenditures, again, you will see where the decrease in revenues are basically offset by decreases in expenditures. And we're actually up in the fund balance, $561,000. And that is because I have not done it yet, but when we talked about our policies, accounting policies, we talked about transferring in the $500,000 from the tourism fund. That is there, if the council chooses to make that transfer. When we talked about it, we said to transfer it over immediately. I did leave about $150,000, I think, in there for some other projects and stuff that Janine does, like our city marathons and those types of things. And the money that's left there, hopefully, is going to last about five years. But the budget as presented for the general fund is showing that there's going to be an increase in the fund balance of about $551,000. And then lastly, David, if you could go back to the very first slide that we had, I'm going to kind of briefly, this is the summary of all the financials, and the main thing I just wanted to kind of hit on, you'll see a highlighted, two columns that are highlighted in yellow. If we look at financials for the month of August, eight months out of 12, we should be right about 67%. And again, revenues fluctuate, and expenditures fluctuate. But as you follow, first of all, if you look at the general fund, this is the amended budget now, you'll see that we are right at the snapshot of eight months for the proposed amendment. 67% revenues, and our expenditures are trailing. We've said that all year around, that the expenditures, the departments are holding the line, they're not spending, and that's holding true year-to-date, right now, through August. So for the next four months, if that holds true, I think we're going to be in pretty good position in the general fund coming into the year. If you work your way down to the page, you'll see highlights in green for special revenue funds. Again, you'll see revenue funds, special revenue funds at 66% percentage of budget, and 56% on the expenditure side. I don't know if you can, can you make that any bigger, David, at all?
Not at this degree.
Anyways, if you continue to work yourself down, on the total enterprise funds are another example. We're at 66% revenues coming in, 56% expenditures. Internal service funds are the same. We're at a little under, a little over 60 on both sides. So total city funds, it's the yellow, two highlighted yellows at the bottom, right about 66% on the revenues, and 59, or 60% on the expenditures. So the proposed amended budget in front of you is truly holding true with where we are at year-to- at year-to-date. And with that, I would like to recommend that we move forward and consider adopting these amendments. We still have an opportunity to do a final amendment at the end of the year if things happen to change, but if we would go ahead and amend, it would help our directors as they're trying desperately to hold the line on expenditures, because right now, until I update the amended budget in our Navoline accounting system, they actually have to work off a two set of books, the budgeted numbers and then the original numbers that we adopted. So it would be very helpful if the council would consider making a motion to amend the budget at this time.
So move.
I have a motion from Alderman Berg and a second from Alderman Moyer. Are there any questions on this motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoenmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes. Carol, do you have anything else for us this evening, or is that it for your three items?
No, I think that's it. Again, thank you so much. We've spent a lot of time together in the last six months, and I think it's paid off here, so thank you.
Thank you, Carol, for walking us through this. Very helpful. Now, I'd like to invite Marty Vonix to present the administrators' update.
Are we going to do the budget guidance part? Because we didn't do that on the agenda yet.
We didn't do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Carol?
Carol, I'm sorry.
Did you still want that?
Did you have something else that you needed?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, Your Honor. Yes, and Marty's actually going to kind of take the lead on the PowerPoint, and I am here to help answer questions and whatnot throughout the discussion.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. So. So as we finalize the '21 budget for council review, we need some guidance and direction from the council, particularly in three areas, library, parks, and pensions. And so the council's final decisions, of course, on this will occur once the budget process concludes, but in order to move forward with the budget and to give both the library and parks some direction, we need some input from the council. So the library director currently projects a '21 budget deficit of $200,000, but this does not include funding for five full-time open positions and five seasonal staff, and the director and board wants guidance to complete their budget requests. So our question to you is, what will the projected property tax dollar allocation be for the library? And this doesn't have to be all answered tonight, but this is questions that we have to struggle with and deal with as we try to tell them what they need to do. So should they assume the same as last year? Will there be additional subsidy from the general fund and other funds? So that's number one, the library. Number two is parks. Again, they have a budget deficit currently in their proposal of $476,000, but it does not include or reflect funding for two groundskeeper positions, but it does include seasonal help. And the parks director and park board also seek guidance to complete their budget requests. Again, what will the property tax allocation be? Should they assume the same level as last year? Also, one question we have is, does the council have any interest in providing an annual subsidy from the city CIP funds for capital improvements for parks, such as cemetery roads, parking lots, those kind of things? They don't have a real CIP source of revenue, and so that is one area that the city council may want to consider. And then finally, is the '20-'21 funding levels for police and fire pensions? At the end here, Dirk is going to give an update on the state of Illinois pension consolidation status, but again, to assist in our budget, we're looking for guidance on establishing the funding level for police and fire pensions. We request consideration of funding the state statutory recommendation for short-term budget relief during COVID-19. So you can see the numbers up there. The state statutory recommended versus the actuary recommended would be, if you add both of them up, either $9 million for the state statutory recommended or our actuary recommended of $12 million. And currently, our pension funds are funded at 43 and 32. And it doesn't mean, you know, this is a one-year-only activity that we believe that as revenues begin to come in over the next several years, we can go back to increasing that at the full actuary level. And for purposes of developing the first draft budget, we assume that the council will levy the same total property tax dollars as last year. After allocating taxes to the library, parks, and pensions, can remaining tax dollars be used to balance the general fund? Is there any expectation to lower taxes? Should we consider levying taxes in the general fund versus parks fund for funding flexibility? And then last thing is parking enforcement. We ceased parking enforcement in April due to COVID-19. Per Mars contract is up for renewal on that, and then we've had several occasions where people have been interested in buying our parking deck, one of our parking decks at least for sure, and so that's a one-time revenue generator. And then any specific, any requests or budget priorities from the council that we may need to address? So those are the questions that Carol and I had as we moved into some of the final stages of the budget process, particularly as we meet with the parks and the library boards and their directors.
Thank you. Do you want us to discuss all of these items this evening, or do you want us to?
Your choice. We can talk about some of those now. I know there's been some discussions in past, prior budget year about some of these items, like the levy, and, but we need to get some guidance.
Well, and I'm personally very interested in trying to get us back up to the level, especially of funding our two important boards of the park service and the library service, but we do have the kind of delay with understanding what we're going to get and what our allocation is going to be for the cares and cures, what we're going to qualify for, and I think those approvals come in late January, early February. So I'm wondering if it would be prudent for us to come in with what the base amount is and then hopefully be able to add to that as that additional money becomes, I'm not sure what the right name is, but they accept it, they accept our recommend, or their request for funds and the funding, the way that we're going to spend it. So have you thought about that?
I think the whole budget can be looked at that way this year, because as we expect revenues to get better, hopefully, as this whole pandemic thing sorts itself out, we are looking at flat revenues, but over time, you know, as things get better, we can start adding things back in, just as when we have to cut, we take things down, we can build things back up. So it doesn't have to, I mean, your strategy there might work very well.
Thank you. Alderman Potter?
Carol, what are our reserves at right now?
In the general fund?
Yes.
They are, with our amended budget, we are at about $13,200,000.
And can you put that in a number of days or a percentage?
Yes, the percentage would be 31.7% and the expenditures in days is 114.
Are there any other comments?
A follow-up.
Alderman Went?
If Alderman Potter's got a follow-up, I'll go after him.
Alderman Potter?
Well, there appears to be a lot in the reserves, and we haven't even touched it. And I know that in the past, during the Great Recession, that was one way that the former council balanced the budget, and we appear to have, you know, some significant revenue streams that are healthier than many of our neighbors. I would think that that would be a place where we could plug that into the budget in the parks and the library, potentially.
So your proposal is to supplement the levy? You're talking about beyond, you're not talking about the levy?
And having said that, I think that, as Marty suggested, and I think Carol's talked about it too, I think some of those things are, I think it may just, it may be even a situation where you're, I don't know, maybe we're holding a reserve, reserve, whatever, because we don't have any idea when things are going to change. I mean, you know, we may see significant changes in behaviors with regard to parks and, you know, what's needed at the pool or Green Valley or whatever, and those are revenue streams, and we want to be ready for them, but, you know, then again, things could go the other direction, and we may spend another year without them.
Alderman Went?
I just want a little clarification, so I make sure that I understand how we're calculating. We've got the $13 million currently right now, but you had indicated that there was, with expenditures, there's some things that are coming down the pipe, but when you calculate the number of days, what is the, what's the number you're using to calculate? Are you using that original budgeted amount? Are you using our COVID budget amount? Are you using actual dollar spent? What are we using to calculate the number of days?
Right, that's a good question, and it's in your packet of the financials. If you look at the amended budget detail for the general fund, it is based on the new projected expenditures on the amended general fund. So $41,581,000 is the reduced expenditures down from $45 million in the original. This does include, this does include the transfer in, again, it hasn't been made, but the transfer in from tourism as an amended budget item. So $500,000 of those reserves are tourism. Go ahead.
So I guess my question is, are we anticipating next year our expenditures only to be at $41 million, or are we expecting it to be, to go back to the $45 million that we have typically budgeted over the last few years, or is it 43? Because I think that that's probably, to get us a good idea, because I don't disagree with Alderman Potter. If we've got excess, you know, that's why we passed the new policies that if we're over the excess, we can use it for capital improvements or different things, but that I just want to make sure we're talking apples to apples. I mean, just because we are on a huge diet this year doesn't mean that our reserves should be based on the diet year if next year it's going to be a little bit more than that. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, that is a very valid point, and we do anticipate, that's going to be discussions here coming up with the '21 budget on which positions to be adding back, but if we were to add back a portion of those positions, and we've kind of identified, you know, there are quite a few, it could be in the million-dollar range to a million and a half. And in addition, we do have labor contracts that we have to pay for, or increases as those as well. So I anticipate the budget that we will be proposing in '21 to go up at least a couple million dollars, combination of positions as well as cost of living. Everything else is pretty much going to be frozen.
Carol, would it be safe to say that it'd be somewhere between this year's budget and the 2020 original proposed budget? Okay.
Alderman Parker?
One of the things that I always kind of lose track of is, at some point in time, and I don't know when that's going to be, the land underneath the bridge is going to become available for purchase. We want to be sure that, I don't disagree with Alderman Potter on, you know, possibly accessing some of those, I just want to be sure that we have a sufficient amount there so that if we do have to bond for some of this land, we bond at the best possible rate. So, I mean, there's, it's a three-dimensional chess game, but I want to be sure we're not losing sight of this purchase that I think we probably are going to at least want to get seriously, look at it seriously, and try to identify, make sure we're not, you know, budgeting something that say, oh, my gosh, yeah, we got to, we got to be able to, you know, make those purchases as well. So don't know exactly how you do that, good luck on that, but I don't even know when that property is even going to be available. We've been talking about it for years. I would assume at some point, there's going to be a day that it's like, okay, you know, let's pony up and get serious or walk away, one of the two, so.
Alderman Waldron?
A couple things, just to give a little direction for myself personally. I personally would not like to see the two levies for parks and library lowered from property tax. At least they get what they got last year. Parking fees in the contract renewal, I would like to go back, I was never in support of stopping it anyway, I would like to go back to enforcing parking fines and stuff like that. Also, if we're still in a COVID method for not fines and penalties for water and sewer bills, I don't think we're in that mode anymore, are we?
I just got a notice that someone's getting their water turned off, so we're doing something.
That's a good thing, then, so.
Not for them, but I would hope that we're in a thoughtful period of transition, because we still, it's very, very important for our community that people stay tethered to their homes, that you're going to be paying a lot more than a little bit of late fee on water and sewer.
So I can agree with that, but we are six, seven months in now, and I'm feeling less tethered to that. It's just my personal opinion. And the last one kind of goes counter to what I just said. I don't necessarily feel comfortable going with the state mandate for pensions. I am probably somewhere in the middle of those two numbers, not quite probably full funding, but not what the state says, too. I think it was 42 and 30% funding levels, that's not comfortable for me.
So I'd like to offer this. I think that what we want to accomplish this evening is giving some guidance to our subsidiary boards, and so we've got the library and the park boards, and they need some stability. I think it would be reasonable for us to commit to the same levy amounts flowing from the real estate tax into those boards, for them to come up with a base budget. And then I think that as we get a little bit further into this, we'll be able to identify the opportunity for additional funding. And I would say we address the pensions the same way, where we go into it planning for at least that base funding, and then as we develop our budget and we figure out where all of the gaps are and we feel comfortable, then we can enhance that plan. We did that the one year, I remember we allocated an additional $800,000 in a year that was put towards the pensions to try to get us back to where we wanted to be. I just think we, at this point in our budget, was still not knowing when we're coming back, that it'd be good for us to set a threshold of minimum so that people can get some planning done, and then we can, you know, have, I would, I would hope that our boards would come up with a budget and then have the alternative budget of if they're allocated an additional $200,000, $400,000, $600,000 of how they would invest that so that everybody's ready to roll. What does the council think about that plan? Alderman Williams?
Your Honor, I think the statutory limit as far as the pensions is not a wise investment or serves the citizens well. I think our actuaries have been rosy in the past, you know, towards the council, and they've done a very good job holding the line by contributing to make up. I think it's penny wise and pound foolish, because that'll still have to be made up, and it kicks the can down the road. It doesn't, it doesn't make any financial sense to do that, and like parks, I think the pensions deserve, you know, what we owe them, and to not pay them now, we'll only have to pay more later.
Do we have a sense, I just, somebody from our pension board, maybe it'd be Alderman Schoenmaker or Carol, could you tell us, how did we do versus the actuarial assumptions for return on investment this past year? Are we looking good, or are we looking stressed?
Well, last year, as of December 31st, we did quite well, but as we have entered into the current year, interest income is below half of what we had projected. We had lost all of it, I think, the first quarter, and now we're making interest back, and they're hoping that it's going to be at least half back by the end of the year, was at the last meeting that I went to. meeting that I went to. Kevin, do you have any additional insight?
I'm trying to look it up. I think I have it saved out here where I can get you something shortly to give you a clear picture.
So am I picking up, so we've had a couple of Aldermen speak about the pensions. Is it kind of the philosophy of the council? And I know we historically have been aggressive about funding our pensions. Do we want to go for the actuarial or do we want to get somewhere between the state mandate and the actuarial recommendation? Alderman Potter?
I would vote for the, for the minimum. I, I understand the concern on behalf of Aldermen's Waldron and, and Williams, but I think that, I think there's a couple of things at play here. I think number one, we're, you know, we're facing a, a, a serious budget problem in terms of revenues. And secondly, you know, I, I'm, I'm of the belief that at some point in time, there's going to be some legislation at the state level that's probably going to change the, the, the target that's been set for us. But, you know, maybe that's wishful thinking on my part. Just quickly too, I would, I would agree with Alderman Waldron's and I think you alluded to it too. I think we should give the parks and the library the baseline of last year.
Marty?
Mayor, may I suggest that perhaps we do these minimum levels and then then we create a priority list of things that we would want to fund if and when those, we get additional revenues if the economy picks up. So we just basically have a list. It might be, we do the minimum pension and then when we have additional revenue, we bring, you know, those pension dollars in or parks or whatever the library, just a suggestion on how we might want to handle it.
So I, I remember when we go into the budget, and I know Alderman Went's kind of our expert on this, is, is getting, trying to estimate what we're actually going to get once we set the tax rate because we've got, you know, the, it's kind of a fluid thing coming right up to the tail end of it. Do, do we have a feel for what we expect at this point? Even, even though those appeals, I don't think they've even been filed. Maybe they have. I don't know where we're at in the appeals process.
I think the county's behind on giving us the, the number. Isn't that true?
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they've even given us what they think that the.
The unappealed?
No, not, not even what, they think that the initial increase or decrease in, in general assessment. Have they?
No, that, that's correct, Mike.
And so, once we get that number, then we can work out that spreadsheet that I created on how much we think would be successful on an appeal and unsuccessful to kind of get us a, a rate number. But, you know, I mean, if, if they come in and say, we're, we're flat year over year for total assessment, that's going to be a whole lot different than if they come back and, and say we're up, you know, 2.3%. And so I, I think that number typically, we've gotten in, I think, October, haven't we? I mean, if not September.
Well, I think we get the number of active appeals at that time and then we guess about what the normal, you know, approval of the appeals is. And then we kind of back into it, try to calculate our tax rate. And then usually we're a little bit off, but we're getting better at it. What the revenue is that's coming off of our tax rate that we set. So I, I mean, I think this is kind of a preliminary, preliminary conversation. Do you have enough from us? Are you looking for very specific direction from the council at this point of where we want you to go? I feel like we're all kind of circling in on the same level for the library and parks at this point.
That's what I'm hearing.
And I feel like there's a little bit of a debate about our pensions. So if we could maybe firm that up a bit so that our staff has some guidance of what we're going to do with that. Alderman Schoenmaker?
I, I'm still struggling to find it. I'm, I'm only finding the, the pension reports, not the performance. But I did want to comment that I do have some agreement with both sides of the argument here. I, I, you know, the further we kick the can down the road, the more it really costs us. And we've talked a couple of times about pension funding bonds. At this point, we have a great rating, a bond rating, and the opportunity to borrow at incredibly historically low rates. I, I still think we need to explore that. I'm, I'm not suggesting necessarily any, any raise in tax or change in tax, but we have some debt that's coming off the books. We'll free up those payments. And I know we need to invest a lot of that money in CIP, but eventually we got to pay this bill. And this bill, you know, that, that unfunded portion, we're, we're falling lower and lower. It's probably time to give it some attention. The rates are at a point where, you know, maybe we take a little chunk of it, maybe we take a big chunk of it. But we need to at least think about that and make sure we examine that and understand, you know, if, if our performance is likely to outpace our, our return, or if our return, our, our performance is out, likely to outpace our interest cost, we're doing the citizens a favor and saving a lot of money down the road. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it. I just want to make sure that that's part of this discussion and we really think about it. The other side of the coin is correct too. We're in a budget crisis. You know, it's not, maybe not the greatest time to borrow money, but, but it's got to be discussed.
So when is the date that we need to formalize the description of how our, our levy will be spent? I know we've got some moving parts on that. The library has to have something specific. The rest of it, we can flow through the general fund. We have to allocate to the pensions. When, when, what's the date that we have to formalize that description and get it in front of the community?
Well, the levy is due to be delivered the third Tuesday of December. So backing up from that, your own part of your budget process, which needs to be done by year end, right? So then we've got to have a 30 day, so early November is what we're looking for, for you to start firming up some of these assumptions. The levies themselves, that's not till the third Tuesday in December. So we're, we're okay that way. It's the issue, or the last Tuesday in December. So it's, but in terms of the levies driving the budget numbers, you've got to have a, on inspection for 30 days before you adopt in December. And you need to do that before year end. So unless you're going to call a lot of special meetings, although you guys meet pretty frequently. We've got some time still, November.
So I, I mean, I feel like, I feel like we all kind of have a consensus of where we're going. We'll have some, some more discussion about what we want to do with our pensions to make sure that we're, where we need to be.
Yeah, I want to throw in one fact Marty alluded to on a slide that we didn't discuss, which is the consolidated pensions. Remember going forward, that's supposed to return more money to the pension funds than we've been getting. That's the idea. Because they're going to be a much bigger group and they're going to do much more like I R F and the other state funds have done than we've done individually on our own. So, you know, in terms of going forward, some of the assumptions are going to be, they're going to do better down the road. So, you know, to Alderman Schoenmaker's point, yeah, there's, we're watching and, and watching, you know, kicking the can down the road a little bit. But also the state's coming in through this forced consolidation to try and say, but the gap might not be as big if we do this. We might get better returns and then your gap not be as big. Just one more complication to throw into the mix.
So Marty, do you need a motion from us?
Carol, what do you think?
Yeah. I, I guess I, I truly look for guidance as we prepare the budget for you here at the end of the month. If you would have a motion of, of some sort, so we know how to be, as a starting point to compile the budget, and then we will bring back all these budget issues that we addressed, but at least we can show you from that baseline where we are at.
So I guess I would entertain a motion that we communicate out to our, our boards that we're looking at the base amount of what they had last year from the source of the levy for both the park board, the library board. We're going to zero in somewhere between the state mandate and the actuarial recommendation for our pensions. So it'll be somewhere between those two numbers likely. And then we're going to want some flexibility in the balance of the levy to make sure that we have an opportunity to move some pieces around depending on what comes up. Is that a reasonable, can I get a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Alderman Moyer. I appreciate that. Alderman Waldron, thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion is to guide our library and parks board in coming up with a budget that is associated with the same amount of money that they were allocated from the levy last year. And then I'm, I'm adding this enhancement, but then they would also have additional requests that they would like so that if we decide that we have additional money, we'd be able to supplement that base levy. The pensions will come in somewhere between the state mandate and the actuarial recommendation. And then we'll have some flexibility in the balance of the levy to figure out what we're going to do with the funding as things firm up and the, the actual amount coming in from the levy comes out. That was really long, but I'm just trying to explain it. Does that make sense, Alderman Schoenmaker?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoenmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
No.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay?
Motion carries.
One more thing?
Yeah.
Probably the most important thing we'll discuss tonight. Trick or treat. So.
Good parts.
Trick or treat hours, what I'm recommending is that we just, same thing that both of our neighbors are doing so that we stay together on this. Hours are five to eight and to follow the LMI Department of Public Health suggestions for trick or treating, which include all the things that you might consider, you know, that the CDC and others have provided us when it comes to things like this. Maintaining social distance, wearing proper face curtains. They suggest consider leaving individually wrapped candy on a table in driveways or in front of walkways, sidewalks or other outdoor spaces where six feet of distance can be maintained. A Halloween costume mask is not a substitute for cloth mask. And trick or treating groups with household members only. Candy collected during trick or treat should be, not be eaten until hand washed. And then, and also to look for alternative trick or treating activities. So we can put that into a news release and communicate that out to, to the rest of the community if the council agrees.
You want a motion?
Sure.
Motion, no pro?
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Waldron. Now, do we want to amend it to mandate big bars? I just feel like this would be, to do that.
To what?
Big bars.
Big bars.
Oh, okay.
Anything, anything? No, no, okay. Any discussion on this? Roll call, please. Oh, Alderman Moyer, sorry.
So what are we supposed to tell, I know at least three different churches that plan to do trunk or treat events. Are, are, is that allowed? What are we supposed to tell them when they ask us if, if that's a?
I think we need to follow CDC guidelines for large group gatherings, I think, is what I would recommend. Dirk, what do you think?
So what, what they're planning, from what I've heard, like, is, 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 you know, they decorate their cars and, and they're going to space them, you know, something like 12 feet apart. Cars will come through and they will provide candy at a distance somehow. They, they, just like if you're trick or treating, but the cars just continue to move around and, and, and out.
I think they have that described and it's like a medium risk if I'm remembering it right. Dirk, do you remember where that fell? Did you hear that part of the conversation?
Trunk or treat?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, is it considered legal or, or are we going to close them down?
Why he looks that up, why don't we do a motion on when we're going to do our trick or treating? Is there anything else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoenmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay?
That motion. That motion carries. What risk level is it? Is it better than trick or treating?
Well, no, it's all subject to the same, unlike sports, I don't think they call it a medium risk. They said it's a, the practice is you've got to be six feet apart. They still want you to have individually wrapped.
So for those who can't hear, they're saying that trunk or treat is allowed.
Thank you though. I mean, I think those things are going to come up. And the parks board is doing something. Maybe Alderman Waldron, what's the parks board doing?
Eric.
Eric Griffith, Parks and Recreation Director. Nice to actually see everyone in person for the very first time. We're doing an event out at Stevens Park where it's usually in the parking lot, but we're doing, it's basically a one-way throughout the whole park. Everyone's spaced out. We're taking reservations. There's only 25 kids per half hour. And we got different stations that are allowing the kids to come through. But it's one-way traffic instead of people coming in from both directions. We're using hand sanitizer, gloves, masks, all those kind of things. So we're, we're doing it within the CDC guidelines.
Are there large candy bars there? Big bars?
If you decide to come.
So. Alderman, Parker?
Yeah, I had a question regarding the parks. I read about it in the paper a couple days ago. So there's a, there's a charge for, it's only for mulling residents, correct?
Yes.
Now are these, the parents or grandparents have to be mulling residents or the kids do? Or how's that work? I was a little unclear when I read that.
I have to double check on that, but it's for children's three to 12 years old and they have to be mulling residents. That's, I'll have to get a little bit more guidance. But from what I understand, the kids that are actually participating in the event have to be mulling residents.
Okay. And we're charging for this?
So it's $6, similar to what we've done with the Easter egg hunt. Where it's a little bit more complex this year with providing hand sanitizer and more staff setup. So yes, it is $6 this year.
Okay. I just thought that was, you know, for family, and this is per kid, right? And not per family? Because I was thinking, yeah, that's when I first read it, my just, my visceral reaction was, that seems like a lot. If you've got four or five kids and maybe you've been out of work and, you know, you know, to come up with $20 or $15 or, you know, more than that, it kind of seems like a lot of money. Plus, you're probably getting costumes for your kids. I mean, and, and, you know, this is one of the few things that these kids can actually enjoy. I don't know. Do we have any scholarship opportunities for families that are struggling? Or, I don't know, I just, you know, I think it's a great idea. I think it's great that we're doing something. I just struggle with the $6 per kid because it's kind of, it can kind of eliminate some of the folks that probably need a little happiness in their life more than anyone else. So that's my initial reaction.
Alderman Berg?
So, I know you've already taken reservations down. Do we have a number of what, how many we have so far registered?
I believe over half of it's already full. I don't have the, the exact number for it, but it has been, when we put it out there, we were getting registrations within the first couple of months. So it is filling up.
Another question, Mayor. Is this a revenue generator for the Parks Department?
It's pretty much a break even. We're buying a lot of different, not just candy, but different items that, coloring books, little, little games through like Oriental Express, different things like that, not just the candy. So it is, it is a break even.
Alderman Berg?
Sorry, I, I, I feel with it being in Stevens Park, and I didn't even get that part of it. Alderman Parker, but people that are, that are going to have three and four kids, that just, I mean, that's a lot for them to afford on top of, I mean, for 24, if they have four kids, $24, they can go to Walgreens and buy their kids bags of candies themselves. You know what I mean? I mean, I know that sounds, you know, it's taking the fun out of it, but there was no way to open this up to just not charge at all.
Alderman Waldron?
I might want to remind, negative mic again here. I might want to remind the council that we've given direction to the departments to, if they're going to do programs to make them cost neutral. If the council's willing to find some funding source to give to the parks to make this lower, that would certainly be, I'm, certainly the park department could adapt. But we've given direction to the department to make these things revenue neutral and not to cost money. So they've just followed the direction from the policymakers.
Alderman Parker?
And I, I totally agree. I totally understand that. I was just wondering if there were any scholarship opportunities for families that are struggling. You know, a large number of our families with children that are of that age are on free and reduced lunches in our schools. And so they don't have the disposable income readily available to them to, you know, just go out and do this. They have to think and plan and, and all these type of things. I just didn't know if you had thought about that. You found, thought about, you know, and it's probably too late this year, but I know that we have Christmas coming up. We have all these other things coming up down the road. To try to find sponsorships, Ansel Gluck, I know would sponsor, be happy to sponsor some.
to try to find sponsorships. Ansel Blink, I know would sponsor, be happy to sponsor some, some. Oh, wait, sorry about that, Dirk. I thought you left the room.
And, and, uh, yeah, we, we did just.
I'm sure Ben Goerian would be happy and, and rule and rule, of course, they'd be happy to join in there too.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that opportunity is endless of, of supporting it. I, I think, I mean, I think that it's just the council talking on behalf of the community that it sure would be nice to give these kids, um, something to, but, but it's, it really, I consider it the Parks Board decision because they're managing that programming and, so I concur with Alderman Waldron that they're making that decision at that level and we probably don't need to second guess it at this one.
Alderman Berg?
So, you have, you know what a total number you can have, right?
Yes.
How many is that?
Oh, it's 25 kids per half hour. I believe it goes for three hours, so we're looking at 150.
Okay. So, um, so can we find money, um, somewhere to, uh?
Well, that's, that's my point. I mean, do we really want to get in the business of, I mean, do you want to do scholarships for?
Well, no, 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 I'm not talking about scholarships. I'm just saying, it's under a thousand dollars. Just can we get, is there, do we have a thousand dollars somewhere that we can just, you know, so the parks can do this? I mean, just to, you know, you see these kids, I mean, with not being able to go to school or, you know, just have some normalcy in their life to be able to, you know? I don't know. I mean, who's to say he's gonna fill out 150 spots, but I just think if there's a way to make it so that these kids don't have to pay.
Alderman Moyer?
I, I agree with that, except for, once you make it a free event, now you gotta figure out how many kids you've got in Moline. So, it's gonna end up in.
Well, he, but, 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 no matter what, whether you're, you're paying or you're not, you're, you're stopping it at, you have the first 150 that sign up, correct? Because of, you know, because of COVID, they have to cut, they have to do the numbers.
Alderman Williams?
They can still go across the street and trick or treat with the rest of the kids. They don't have to go to Stevens Park.
This isn't on actual, it's on the 29th, so it does not take place during the actual trick or treating hours.
Yeah, I, so I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I really don't think that that's a council discussion. I mean, I hear what you're saying too and, um, we're all aware of it and if there's something that somebody wants to do personally, but I just, I, I think we're going down a slippery slope of why wouldn't we sponsor kids to play softball? Why wouldn't we sponsor kids to go swimming? Why wouldn't we sponsor kids to do the craft event at Christmas time? I mean, it's, it really is, um, an ongoing issue. Um, but I do appreciate the empathy and I'm a little surprised we didn't take up the big bar mandate. Cause that's what really wants. If a kid wants something, they want a big bar. Alderman Potter?
Uh, on a totally different note, as long as Eric's up here, part of Marty's presentation was, uh, about giving CIP money to parks. Does parks have a CIP plan?
Yes, we've got a, a six, uh, five, five-year CIP plan that has been put together.
I can't remember seeing that. Be good. Can you send that back out to us? So, thank you.
Yes.
Be helpful in our budget.
And I, I apologize, we're gonna veer off a little bit, you're actually here and I get to talk to you. I was going by Stevens Park the other day and we have the hoops back up and the playgrounds are open, so it's just, it's pretty much wide open again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, those opened back up. Um, I think it was June 28th. Basketball, volleyball, playgrounds opened back up and, and phase three.
Dirk, did you have something you wanted to say? You seemed poised.
I am. Uh, never get the mayor. This is the lesson. Uh, trunk or treat events are considered a higher-risk activity and are discouraged. An alternative involves the decoration in a large parking lot or outdoor setting with adherence to social distancing and using tables preset with participants. So you can decorate the trunks, but you shouldn't have them reaching in to get the candy. It should be on a table outside the decorated trunk. The number of trunk or treat events is legion in Illinois, so they are permitted, but they are higher risk, as the mayor said, and they are packed without the tables. So, if the church asks you, you can do it, but you have to have a table.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
You don't have an administrative update?
No.
That was it? That was it? Okay. Fantastic. Now we're gonna do council business. Alderman Parker? Oh, wait, no, Alderman Williams. This is gonna be hard. Alderman Williams, do you have any business?
This would be, um, Alderman Berg.
We're back to.
No, we're gonna do, no, we're doing, we're doing council business first before we go into executive session, if you don't mind. Alderman Williams?
We haven't done the council meeting yet.
We're not even.
Oh my gosh, we haven't even done the council meeting yet. I need to, I need to do a re-sess. Public comment. Is there any public comment this evening?
No, there wasn't.
Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing none, we are gonna close out of the committee of the whole and begin the council agenda. And will we be having an invocation this evening, Alderman Moyer? So we're gonna begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Skoomaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and closed session meeting minutes of September 22nd, 2020. Second meeting ordinances. Council Bill 3023-2020, in ordinance amending chapter 19, mobile homes and mobile home parks of the Moline Code of Ordinances to modify the regulations for mobile homes in the city. Council Bill 3028-2020, in ordinance amending chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 7 thereof, one-way streets by including 32nd Avenue from 7th Street to 4th Street, traveling westbound for the hours of 7:30 AM to 8:30 AM and 1 o'clock PM to 3:30 PM on school days. Council Bill 3029-2020, in ordinance amending chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 20-2202, loading zones by including 12th Avenue from 41st Street to 48th Street for the, the hours of 7:30 AM to 8:30 AM and 1 o'clock PM to 8, to 3:30 PM on school days. Resolutions. Council Bill 1100-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an application for funding under the Rockland County Waste Management Agency for the Solid Waste Assistance Grant Program, fiscal year 21, for the amount of $32,612, and authorizing staff to do all things necessary to complete and submit said application.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Not consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Council Bill 3030-2020, in ordinance amending chapter 34, water and sewers, section 34-4100, purpose intent of the Moline Code of Ordinances. Council Bill 3031-2020, in ordinance amending chapter 31, taxation of the Moline Code of Ordinances, by amending section 31-1100, hotel and vacation rental use tax imposed. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you.
Now we'll do council business. Alderman Williams, do you have anything this evening?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Yeah, I have, uh, three things.
Okay.
Um, first thing is, and maybe I missed it, um, are we doing a work session for the budget on the 24th?
October 24th?
It's a Saturday? Is that, I have it in my calendar. I saw it on the first.
Yeah, I have it in my calendar too. Janine, did we formalize that last? Um, I think Marty might have some direction here.
Actually, uh, we, because, you know, there's a lot going on, but Caroline, we'd like to move that back to the 31st for that work session that the council can.
Halloween?
Otherwise, yeah.
Halloween?
Come dressed. Yes. Is that a problem?
Not for me.
It's early morning, right?
It's starting in the morning, yeah.
As long as it's the morning.
Are we targeting like, um, what was it, 7:30 or something to noon? Is that what the plan, I think that's kind of what we're doing this year.
I thought it was seven and noon.
That works for me. Does anyone have a problem with rescheduling that to the 31st?
As long as it's the morning.
Let's, Went, do you have an issue?
I'm, I might. I've gotta find out. We may be in St. Louis, um, that weekend, but, uh, I'll, if, if that's what it is, that's what it is. We'll, we'll have to figure it out. But I, I think I'm supposed to be in St. Louis that weekend with my family.
Alderman Skoomaker?
I'll be out of town as well.
That's probably a threshold that's gonna be a problem for us to have initial discussions.
We'll do the 25th.
Thank you. And we can, we can just, you know, do what you got ready and then we'll come back with another phase.
We'll just keep cranking it through until we get it done.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Thank you. All right, is everybody okay before we accept that? Do I have any absences for the 25th? Is it 25th? Can't be the 25th.
24th.
24th, 24th, thank you.
24th, yeah.
Anybody?
That's the original date that we scheduled.
Are we gonna get anything ahead of time or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't know. It was, hopefully it's not a big huge book again, is it? Is it not the green bar thing that we always promised we're never gonna get? We always end up with a big, huge, green bar book?
What we got last year was great.
We'll, we'll put it all on one piece of paper. How's that?
I don't know if you can do that. I'd be able to read it too.
Next item?
No, we'll, Carol's, uh, in charge of that. I'm gonna let her speak to that a little bit.
Um, yes, the plan is just to compile a book very similar to the one that we had last year. And, um, we had hoped to have an extra week, so I may, what we, um, I'm gonna get some thought, but we'll do the best that we can here to get at least a beginning work session going for the 24th. And then following up with an, with a second alternative date that I think was on the original calendar, Janine.
Yeah.
I don't have that right in front of me.
Yeah, it's.
It might have been like the 5th or the 10th or something like that. I'm not sure.
Well, it's, I thought was the, I'd have to pull up the calendar, but I think is the following Tuesday is also a work.
Oh, that's right, the 27th, it works, 27th.
Yes, correct.
That, that would be a Tuesday.
So if it makes sense to move that back because you won't be completely prepared, um, we could do that. We could switch that out and have that be a regular meeting and then have a work session be at a subsequent meeting if that makes sense. So we'd have that flexibility better than the Saturday switch. Sorry, sorry. Pushed. Yes, Alderman Parker?
Yeah, I can't remember what my second thing is, cause I'm so excited about the third thing. And so I'd like to, at this point, to pass it over to Jeff Maynes, who's gonna take it for a couple very short seconds and then show us something really cool.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Parker, and, 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 and thank you to the rest of the members of, of City Council for, uh, providing me a, a, just a quick, brief opportunity to talk about a recent marketing, uh, piece that I worked together, uh, with the Main Street Commission on to, to, to ready it, to get, um, um, out there for e- essentially, uh, the Quadsy's Region Marketplace. It is a promotional video that we worked and contracted with, um, uh, Gunter Schwartz Advertising to kind of showcase what we have going on currently through this pandemic and the, these complicated times in downtown Moline, um, for our accommodations, uh, specifically how safe we can really be in downtown Moline while still having fun. Uh, so I have the video that I had sent to IT, so David, if you could go ahead and queue that up. I know for some of the individuals that, um, are not in council chambers, uh, tonight, I just recently emailed you a link to it, uh, because of the technical, uh, difficulties. We can't kind of play it both through, uh, WebEx and, um, through the council chambers at the same time. So, uh, I hope you all really, really like it. Um, the, a huge tip of the hat on, on all of this goes to Rob Gunter. He, he's a, a pretty creative and brilliant, um, video producer, uh, whose business is located right in, in the heart of downtown, uh, on the historic Block Plaza. So, uh, certainly if there's any questions, anything you have, uh, feel free to reach out to me. But if anything, this is just, uh, what I think is a, a pretty fun and cool way to transition you guys, all of you into executive session. So, thank you so much and, and go ahead and roll the film, uh, David.
All right, so thank you very much, Jeff. Um, you, you know, you've done just a tremendous job in a very difficult time. And so applause to you. I know you always give credit to everybody else, but you should be real proud of this. And, and it's gonna be out, where are we gonna be able to find this?
Uh, in, in a number of areas. I'm gonna continue to work with the Main Street Commission to maybe posture, uh, running ads through maybe WQAD, um, and, and using some of the SSA 6 budgetary promotional advertising dollars for that, but certainly through, uh, uh, social media. Uh, both through Facebook and I've, uh, recently been able to reclaim the Moline Center, uh, Instagram page. And it's going to be the very first post, uh, of, of the Moline Center page, um, since it was created a number of years ago and then just noth- nothing was ever posted on it. So, um, it's gonna be fun to, 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 to bring into the community and begin to show it off.
Well, thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
That's all I have unless I remember my third thing, which is probably that one.
Okay. Well, thank you, Alderman Parker. I appreciate it. Alderman Went?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Potter?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer? Alderman Waldron? No, Alderman Skoomaker, sorry.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Waldron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Berg? Um, I have one thing that I wanna just express my gratitude. Um, we have a couple of parks benefactors that have graciously planted trees at our downtown dog park. And so Myers Landscaping donated the trees and Ansel Blink, um, paid to have them planted. And they're quite beautiful. I, I, I am a dog park user and, uh, the people that were using it, not so much the dogs, I don't think they cared, but they were like, where's our trees? And so we have some new beautiful trees in place. And so thank you for that and that, we'll be doing a communication out to the public in regards to that, to, to formalize our gratitude. So, thank you very much. Um, that's all I have. How about staff? Marty, do you have anything? Does any, anybody on the team have anything? Nothing? Okay. Thank you. Alderman Berg?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, 5 ILCS 120/2C11, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 120/2C1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Alderman Parker. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Oops, sorry, aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?